Bill. All right, well. Uh, this is the July twentieth, twenty twenty-one Borough Council work session. Uh, we will start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Flynn. Thank you, Bernie. Uh, next item on the agenda are comments, suggestions, petitions by residents and attendants regarding items not on the agenda. Ready? Seeing none, the next item on the agenda is to accept the recommendation from the bid to appoint Kevin Finn and Matt Holliday to the Bid Board of Directors. Any comments or questions on this agenda? Ready? Put that on consent? Great. The next item on our agenda is to interview two candidates for one vacancy on the Westchester Library Board. The first person on the agenda is Ms. Grow. Are you here? Oh, please come up to the podium. Do we still have to hold the microphone down for the podium? I'm not, I have, hold it. I have to hold it. Oh, you don't have to hold it.
I'm pretty loud, too.
Uh, hi, Ms. Grow. Um, can you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in the Library Board position?
Sure, yeah, my name is Lauren Grow. Um, I am relatively, um, new to the borough as a resident, though I attended Westchester University and grew up not so far from here. Um, in January of twenty twenty-one specifically, I ran for the Railroad Restoration Committee, um, as a volunteer and was elected. And, um, it's been an awesome journey to be involved and learn more, though I don't feel my skill set is the best served for that committee. Um, when I contacted Dana to learn a little bit more about the vacancies and other volunteer roles, she said that there was a vacancy on the Library Board. Um, and it's actually what I had originally expressed interest in when I had asked her what volunteer, um, opportunities were available. I've been a member of the Chester County Library System since, um, my mom thinks nineteen ninety-seven. Um, and I went to Westchester University and I actually didn't use that library. I walked up to the Westchester Library. So, um, I would say reading is a passion, though I don't think that's necessarily the most important thing to say. Um, I work at a school, education is really important to me. Um, and I think that the Library Board engaging the public with the history values and obviously educational aspects of, um, the Westchester Library in addition to the public resources is really important, um, to the borough, to the public, um, and to me specifically. So, that's my.
Thank you, and what do you do, uh, in your professional life?
I'm a Director of Marketing and Development for an independent school in northern Maryland. Um, fundraising, marketing, and strategic planning is really what I do for a living.
Cool. Any questions from anyone else on council for Ms. Grow? All right, well, just to let you know what the process is, we, uh, have another candidate. Obviously, we have one vacancy. Uh, I really appreciate, uh, as an initial matter, your willingness to volunteer, uh, both on this board and in your prior service. Um, after we hear the other candidate's interview, uh, we will make a decision tomorrow, uh, as to who to appoint, and we will let you both know. But thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
All right, Mr. Cooper, are you here? You do not have, oh, you can hold it if you want.
All right.
You don't have to hold the button in, though.
How are you?
That, that honor is reserved for Borough Council. Uh, if you could tell us a little about yourself and why you're interested in joining the Library Board.
Sure, my name is Matt Cooper. I am an attorney at Macquarie Harvey on West Miner Street. I've been with the firm about a year. Prior to that, I was at a firm in Washington DC for five years, um, but grew up my whole life in, um, the southern Chester County area near Oxford. Um, my wife's from Delaware County and we lived in DC for about five years, and during the pandemic, um, I made the realization that we wanted to put down roots closer to home. I've been in, uh, much like Lauren, a relatively new resident to the borough, but, um, not new to the area, I guess you could say. I, uh, at Macquarie Harvey, I'm a business attorney. I represent businesses of all sizes, shapes. Um, I represent startups to mid-market corporations, and in that representation, I do a lot of five oh one C three representations, so I'm intimately familiar with the issues that these five oh one C threes have on a daily basis, obviously fundraising, civic engagement, getting participants, you know, just day, daily life of what these organizations go through. Um, further to that end, about two years ago, I put a lot of thought into kind of where I wanted to put my time and, and focus and attention. And I joined the Development Committee of the Westchester Public Library. I've been a, a member there for about a year, I think. After learning about all the committees that the library has, the Development Committee stuck out to me the most because that's their fundraising committee, and that's the life, the lifeblood of, of, of the, of the library and every five oh one C three. Um, for the past eight or nine months, I've been a public observant on every meeting of the public library's Board of Trustees, just observing how they operate, what their committees do, and how they are, um, co-dependent upon each other. So I feel like I have a good understanding of the library's current processes. Um, I also help out with their holiday home tour. Um, much like Lauren, you know, being, being a member of a library is something I've been passionate about. I think it's, it's something that draws someone who's, has no home to someone who has, uh, five homes, you know? Library is, is the same to that person, and, uh, I think that, um, especially post-pandemic, I think libraries have a lot to offer.
Thank you, and, uh, thank you very much for your prior service to library and your, your willingness to volunteer for this. I'll say this to, to both of you, uh, whomever does not make it on the Library Board, I, I hope you'll continue to look for opportunities to, uh, stay engaged. We have a number of other boards and commissions, as I think you both well know, uh, and are always happy to have, uh, engaged citizens involved in them. Uh, any other questions from Borough Council? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Cooper.
Thank you for your time.
The next item on the agenda is item number six. Uh, that is to approve the live streaming of Borough Council meetings on YouTube and/or Facebook. It's maybe a little redundant considering I think it's happening right now. Uh, but who, who wants to talk about this? Bill?
So this is specifically about streaming and nothing else. So we can really only stream on one service at a time. I recommend we stream on Facebook. This is basically because on Facebook, we have over sixty-four hundred subscribers. Our brand-new YouTube channel has nineteen. So if someone's, has Facebook installed on their mobile device, they will get a notification that the borough is broadcasting live. And so we'll have a much big, bigger opportunity to get more viewers watching our meetings. And then to move forward, we will continue uploading all of the videos the next day to the YouTube channel and the website. So that's, that's what I, uh, recommend today. It was a five, I've been testing it, to give you an example, we tested it for five minutes yesterday. We had twenty-four people watching it, just while IT was testing it. Uh, and just about a five to ten second buffer. So you would go crazy trying to watch it while you're in the meeting, which is a five to ten second buffer, which is normal for live, live broadcast. And then continue to evaluate that streaming service rest of the year, see what we, uh, how we can even further improve it and expand it.
I'm scared that the testing's more exciting than the meeting. Um, any comments or questions from anyone on council? Consent? Does this mean we're all gonna have to start wearing ties like Bernie?
I will say it was two IT guys talking for five minutes, that's pretty exciting.
Oh, I'm less scared then. Thank you, Bill, I really appreciate all your hard work on that.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the next item on the agenda is to enter into a contract with Elite Tree Care for shade tree maintenance for the remainder of twenty twenty-one and for twenty twenty-two, uh, at the submitted hourly bid rates. Don, you wanna, this is public work, so you wanna tell us about this?
When the attachment comes up, uh, previous vendor that we used, we're not using anymore, so we needed. Elite Tree Care came in, a little bitter, various services are in there, no one wants to fill in, but do you want me to?
Sure.
Okay. Um, last fall, uh, last December, we went out for bid, and, uh, Knight Brothers was the contractor that was a little bitter. Unfortunately, they have not been able to service us, they've got a Penn Dot contract, and that's their primary client. They don't have the staff to, uh, service the borough to the, to our satisfaction. So we mutually agreed to terminate the contract, so that's why we're, uh, back here again, looking to, uh, get a new tree, uh, maintenance contractor in here. Um, the low, we, we approached this one a little bit differently. We had the same, um, hourly rates that we had previously, but this time we wait, we did a wait factor based on items that are more commonly used, so that it's more real, uh, the fees are more appropriate to what we're gonna use. So with that, Elite Tree Care was a little bitter, and that's who we recommended, recommending for, uh, the Ranger twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two.
Cool. Thank you, Al. Any questions from council? Consent? Ready? Item number eight is, uh, to enter into a contract with J E V Construction at a cost of one point three eight eight million dollars for civil slash mechanical work and with Eastern Environmental Contractors at a cost of ninety-five thousand dollars for electrical work for the Taylor Run Wastewater Treatment Tertiary Filtration System. Oh, great. We're gonna need some help on this one, I think.
Mike Finley, Superintendent of Taylor Run.
Hey, Mike, how are you?
Any answer to the questions you have?
Um.
We got, I'm sorry, yeah, we had, uh, we have a tertiary filtration system for our phosphorus permit. We had that a living. Phosphates. Coming up in the fall of twenty-two. Living is on it. Got to give it a bat. Trial test last year. Got great, got, oh, that lowered our TSX number of phosphorus number. Copper test, that's not even coming. Down the road, all the stuff's gonna be on.
Okay.
So great, gonna take other metals out.
So this upgrade is going to, we're anticipating we'll solve future problems.
Yes, definitely. Let's stay in the yard.
The next, next year, DEP will have the regulations that we have to remove to get that done by mid-July of next year, Mike?
We're gonna get it done by July of twenty-two.
Twenty-two, right.
And then that'll give us like, for five, six months to get it, uh, all the bugs worked out.
And the copper, the copper testing was in addition, that's not being regulated yet, but it's probably gonna happen there.
Okay.
Cost is, you know, it's about one point five million total eventually with electric and what have you. Uh, so we'll do some this year, mostly design work this year, construction next year, so it'll be budgeted, uh, two, two consecutive years.
And did we budget for that work in this year?
Yes.
Okay. Um, cool. Can we use a stream protection fee for this?
Uh, no, this is sewer, sewer fund money.
Does it go in the stream?
Uh, eventually, yes.
Wouldn't taking aluminum out of it protect the stream?
Uh, no, but if sewer fund money, I'd keep that segregated for the sewer fund.
Okay. Um, any questions? Council? Consent? Thank you.
Okay, uh, another item on the agenda is about this.
It's you, too. We're hoping to get some money from the county.
It's for this project, the grant.
Okay, cool. So we're gonna, do you know what the, uh, grant that we're seeking is? Is there like, uh?
It's through Chester County Department of Community Development.
I think we applied for one point five million.
All of it. Be nice. All right. Uh, any objection to putting number nine on the consent agenda as well? Money from the county? All righty, thank you, appreciate it. We're, we're gonna keep you up here as long as possible. Uh, the next item on the agenda is to enter into an agreement with Keystone Alliance to perform a sewer tap fee study at a cost of forty-five hundred dollars. What, what does that mean?
Well, it's, uh, we haven't had, we haven't raised our, our fees since, our last study was two thousand and four. Now, if we can get this up to date, we can use this money to pay for sewer fund capital projects, help us out. And we, we need to do it.
And the sewer tap fee is what we charge for development and other access to the sewer system? All right, any additional questions about the sewer tap fee study? All righty, uh, consent? Cool, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Number eleven is approve the proposal from PFM to determine the range of value for the sanitary system at no cost to the borough. Um, many of you will remember, over the past couple of years, we've had a number of discussions about, uh, the amount of money we could make from the sale of our sewer system. Um, no action on that is being taken, but, uh, PFM will, as, as it says in the agenda, at no cost to the borough, uh, do an assessment of the system to determine a more specific, uh, value of that system, uh, so that we could better debate this problem going forward, one way or another. Anything to add to number eleven? Questions or comments from anyone?
Do, does this work? All right, okay. Do we have any estimate already? I feel like we had some kind of estimate, or is that just a general market value thing? Uh, do we have anything yet, or is, we have no numbers?
Uh, I think the distinction between what we, what we have previously and this is that they're actually gonna evaluate what we, what we have, whereas the prior analysis was a very general, this is what you make their people sell systems for. Now they're actually gonna go look at the facilities themselves and say, you know, oh, this is on fire, you know? You can't sell it for twenty million dollars, or hey, actually, this is great, you know, this is in really good shape. Uh, you know, what we actually have. Does that sound right, Mike?
Yeah, and there's, there's so many variables involved in something, I guess, you know, the, a key step is to get an idea. It's like if you're selling your house, do you have an appraisal done? See what it's worth, then you put it on the market, and you start negotiating. That's, that's the kind of the, the step we're at.
Yeah, the difference between what we had previously was just someone coming in and saying, in Westchester, houses are going for X and, you know, per square foot or whatever. Uh, all right, any objection to, uh, a free evaluation of our sanitary system? Great, consent for eleven. Uh, number twelve is not ready for discussion, so that's gonna be tabled. Uh, number thirteen is to enter into a contract with Eastern Armored Services for cash and coin transport services at a cost of eight hundred and sixty-four dollars a month. I assume this is just a company that's gonna move our money from the parking meters?
Yeah, Sean, Sean's been, uh, working on this, we, uh,
Thanks, we went over, thanks, Mike.
I bet, I bet he'd disagree.
We went over it in Parking Committee, we, um, had been using, um, another armored car service to transport cash and coin to be counted at a facility in, um, Trenton, I believe it was. Um, we had some customer service issues with that company, so we terminated that relationship. But before we did that, we developed a, um, plan to take it to a retail branch in town with the help of the, uh, Westchester, uh, Borough Police Force as an escort. So it was a really good example of interdepartmental cooperation, and unfortunately, it only lasted about three weeks before the retail branch said, whoa, we don't want any more of this coming in through our doors. So we were kind of, uh, stuck, and we went out and needed another transport service to take our coin and cash to be counted. So we had a downtime of about six-plus weeks. Um, and we'd like to get this, uh, approved by council. Uh, I think it's a, uh, good deal. We, we, uh, spoke to four different companies, and only one of them, uh, submitted a bid. It's kind of something that we wanna get moving and get out the door. Um, it's significantly more than we had been paying. We had been paying about five hundred and eighty dollars a month for this service, this is eight hundred and sixty-four. So I'm gonna continue to look at this the rest of the year to see if we can get some savings baked into next year's budget, but this might be our rate going. Just wanna prepare you all, about ten thousand dollars a year to get this coin transported out of the building, and each bag weighs about fifty pounds and has a thousand dollars in, in it. And, uh, we generate at least, right now, we're generating ten or twelve of those a week. And you, where I was going, gangbusters like it was in twenty nineteen, that number can double, so it's a lot of weight we need to get out of.
Plus, I assume you're tired of putting it in the little paper sleeves.
Takes a lot of time.
It's gotta be time, it's, it's. All right, any, uh, any questions for Sean on the, uh, armored services, armored car services? Sound agenda? Item number fourteen is schedule a public hearing and to direct the solicitor to prepare an amendment to Chapter one oh four to install a handicap parking space at five oh seven East Barnard Street. Anything to add to that, Sean? At least a pretty standard fare, all right? Um, this sounds like a, you know, seven o'clock, uh, public hearing next month, maybe?
Yeah, we have a, we have another one from last month that you approved, the, both will be on that, uh, ordinance, so either Wednesday or third, or Tuesday or Wednesday night, it's up to you.
Okay. Uh, let's do Tuesday.
And just a piece of information, too, um, I asked, when I first saw these getting approved, I asked Hector, well, how do we get, how do we tire handicap spaces if somebody moves out? So we do have a list of active handicap spaces that we review every year to make sure people are still using them and still live in the neighborhood, and we do go out and take signs down when.
In the past, the process has been the neighbors coming and saying, hey, uh, old Mrs. Smith moved, uh, ten years ago, can we get rid of this? All right, uh, thank you. Put that on consent? Ready? Uh, the next item on the agenda under Public Safety is to approve the hiring of three Borough Police Officers. We have a two oh recommendation on that. Mr. Braceland?
Yeah, I was, uh, uh, as I mentioned last week, I was a little uncomfortable with finding out about this the day before the meeting. Since earned more, so it's not the issue that it was last week.
Does anyone have any questions about this agenda item on council or anyone else in attendance?
Mr. Galley.
Bernie.
Coming from the Finance and Revenue Department, we do have in the budget forty-four police officers set in there for twenty twenty-one. Uh, what's happened now is the, the, uh, we're gonna escalate one of the officers, um, instead of January. It would come sooner, uh, so they could be in the same class together, so they could be training together. And, uh, uh, the mayor was kind enough to share everything with finance and with the, uh, administration. And, uh, it, it makes sense to move forward at this particular time with the, the hire of three people. Uh, even though we were gonna space everybody out, it's a, it's a good, the candidates are excellent, and it's a good move.
Excellent, thank you, Bernie. Uh, thank you, Mayor, for your memo on this.
Thank you.
Any other, uh, questions, uh, from council or anyone else on the three police officers? Consent?
Ready? Just a organizational question, Jordan, are you gonna miss tomorrow night?
Uh, it'll just have to be formalized tomorrow night in voting session, and then, uh, we'll get the conditional offers out, uh, this coming week.
So we'll just leave, leave it as is on the agenda?
Yeah, just, I mean, on the consent agenda, they'll just go like everything else.
Okay.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is to approve allowing live music on Gay Street, uh, within the open-air market with the, the listed restrictions. Uh, committee recommended this three oh, any, uh, comments or questions on this item from council?
Uh, I brought this up just so, I guess I'll talk about it, and in full disclosure, this affects me, cause I, I play, uh, and I try to get gigs in town. And, uh, I think their prior restrictions were to not allow any amplified music, and I think that was just too general of a, uh, restriction, and it doesn't, it's not realistic, I think anybody would be amplified, even if it was like a guy playing an acoustic guitar, you'd probably plug in. So this is just, I think, a little bit more pragmatic and, uh, makes a lot more sense, and seems like we have a lot of favor. And, uh, and last weekend I played, and it was very well received, so I think it'll be a good thing.
Cool, sounds good. Of course not.
I was not amplified, no.
Any other, uh, comments or questions from council or anyone else? Uh, Don, yeah, go ahead.
Um, what doesn't appear here, we discussed it last week a little bit, um, is, I think we need a, a start time. Uh, just so, like I said, I, I would suggest five o'clock or, you know, whatever works, just because that might interfere with businesses up on the second floor that just don't like music, so.
No, I think that's a good idea, what if we did like five o'clock on weekdays, noon on weekends, one o'clock on weekends? Noon? No, five o'clock weekdays, noon on weekends.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Okay, does that work for everybody? Uh, can we put that, with that modification on the consent agenda? Yes, yeah, thank you. Cool. I expect Mr. Stefano to let us all know when his next gig is up in town. All righty, item number seventeen is a zoning hearing application, uh, from, uh, the D Baptiste Family Limited Partnership, seeking a variance to allow construction of a single-family dwelling without combining adjacent parcels. Uh, Mr. Gore?
Good evening. The, uh, committee recommendation was, uh, three oh for no solicitor to attend that hearing. They're simple dimensional variances as well as a special exception. The requirement for the combination of the, uh, adjacent lots.
That makes sense. Uh, any comments or questions from council regarding the decision as to whether we should send a solicitor to the hearing? Comments or questions from anyone else? All righties, uh, do we even need, we don't even need to put that on consent, right? All right. Eighteen, approve the land development application for the reverse subdivision at one-ten to one-twelve South Matlack. Committee of Recommendation, three oh. Anything to add to that, Kevin, or Don?
No, not really, it's pretty straightforward submission, they're just requesting a reverse subdivision in this parcel to construct a two-family dwelling.
Cool. Any, uh, comments or questions from anyone on council regarding the reverse subdivision? Anyone else here would wanna talk about this? All righty. Consent for eighteen? Okay. Nineteen are two HARB certificates of approval, uh, one with conditions, the other without. Mr. Braceland, uh, anything of note with our two HARB applications?
Uh, not really, uh, except the, um, exception was the, the grill be fit, able to fit the entire pass, but other than that, item B also is, it's just very straight.
Okay. Some chocolates, fudge, and ice cream. Hmm. Uh, any questions from council on our HARB application?
Uh, I don't do.
Is this, is this not in the sweetest, uh, or is this? Now we know why Bernie ran for council.
Thank you, sir. I, I'm fully.
Any, uh, any objection to putting this on the consent agenda? All righty, we'll put nineteen on the consent. The, uh, next item on the agenda is discuss placing orders for twenty twenty-two leased vehicles. Mr. Flynn?
Good evening, everyone. This is an exciting, exciting night for me. Uh, we started this journey in twenty eighteen, so. So 19, 2020, 2021, we've had three mayors since we started. We've had two police chiefs, one and a half borough managers, two finance directors, two fleet managers, two borough council presidents, and we've had two elections. Uh, government doesn't move quickly. So it, it's taken a while. Uh, I have just six points to, to clarify what we're doing so everyone at council and everyone knows what's going on. Uh, features and benefits of our partnership with Enterprise Leasing. Number one, they are the common, they are Commonwealth-approved vendor. They're source well or just like Co-Stars. So that's a big plus right there. Why did we decide to look into leasing our vehicles? Uh, the reason, the true reason is our, our fleet is aging of cars, trucks and police vehicles and are driving up maintenance costs because they keep units too long. Under the new program, we will be changing vehicles three to five years while they're still in their warranty, instead of asking the police to ride in cars that are eight, 10, 12 years old. Uh, the, the, the safety of our employees. The, the, the turnover of the vehicles, uh, will be, uh, done during their warranty period and all their maintenance is included in the program. So that will help our, um, fleet manager as well as, uh, uh, our staff in order to, to, to turn the cars over and to be driving a much safer cars. The resale of the leased car, vehicles, uh, after they sell the leased vehicles, the borough gets the money so we can forward it on to the next lease. And this way here, we keep our units very, very, very fresh. All the departments were consulted on the type of vehicles and features they would like to see and their type of fleet. So the police department was involved with it, public works was involved, the administration was involved in it. And everyone had a say in what type of vehicles that we're planning on leasing. Lastly, the maintenance of the vehicles can be done either by our staff or by a third vendor, uh, which is approved either by us or by Enterprise. And by doing this, um, the list that you see on the wall, there's 14 vehicles, uh, if it, uh, that are proposed to be, uh, leased in 2022. The reason why we have to, we're asking to approve the lease package now is because there's new computer chips for new cars. And, um, 2021, the inventory was very, very low. So it's going to take all the way to the first quarter for us to get a new set of cars or vehicles for our department. But if we wait past the 25th, it, what, what happens then is we go to the third or fourth quarter of next year, uh, for that, for that reason. Um, so the, uh, the, 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 two nice things about the, the lease package is that, um, Enterprise will be keeping an eye on the resale value of the vehicles. As soon as they, they hit a point where we can maximize our value, uh, they'll come to us and say it's time to flip the vehicle so we can get a large sum of money. What happens now is we buy two or three vehicles a year and we drive them to their, have no value at all to them. And then we put them on pen bid trying to get as much for them as we can. This way here, we're, the employees, staff, police are always in, uh, new vehicles and also new safe vehicles, uh, because they're constantly, uh, changing over them every three to five years. Mr. Peron, did I forget anything?
Yeah, there's a, um, just to council understands what the ask is tonight. Um, we're not specifically asking for this list of vehicles. What I'm asking for, um, is for Borough Council to authorize the Borough administrative staff to enter into an agreement to order vehicles with 2022 money being the 2022 budget. It's not been approved, which is a little bit of an odd ask. I don't think it's ever happened before. But as Bernie said, in order to get vehicles placed for the first quarter to first half of next year, we have to do it by 25th, which is over the weekend. Um, and we'll, we'll define this list. I, this cost is about 68,000, so if I just, if I just put on the agenda up to 70,000, that will serve our needs. Um, another, uh, big aspect of this lease program over three, four, five, six years, however long it takes to rotate the entire fleet. And we're only talking, talking vehicles up to, uh, our F-550s. Big giant dump trucks, backhoes, fire trucks, they're not part of this. Uh, but all the other vehicles are and more we turn over, the faster we'll be able to go to a fully electric vehicle fleet, uh, probably faster than anybody else around here, which I, um, I know is a priority to the borough to be green and clean. Possible fuels in the future and as fast as we can. But that's, that's the, uh, that's the ask.
Should we budget, should we consider for the 2022 budget to have both the 2022 expense and the 2023 expense in there so that going forward, we have this budgeted a year ahead of time so we don't hit this weird like procedural problem?
Uh, if we were, you know, cash rich, I would say yes.
We're, we're not? This is the first time hearing of this. Sure, that, that makes perfect sense. Uh, any questions from council on this? Yeah, Nick?
Um, so last week from, um, the wastewater treatment folks, we got a really great five-year spec, really great five-year plan. Um, and what they did is they took, took, took a look at all the improvements they expect to make, what needs to be replaced. They very strategically chose a year so that we can float around a million, million point two every year. Get consistent. Um, is that something we've done for our fleet? Just in terms of purchasing vehicles that were the next, like, do we have a plan to compare against in terms of leasing versus purchasing?
Well, I, I think we went through that about two, two and a half years ago. We went through that. And the folks from Enterprise, I believe they gave us a five-year plan. That's, you know, the, you know, they get, I think that horse is already out of the barn, so to speak. Um, and that's not the ask. The ask tonight is not whether to lease or to continue purchasing vehicles. It's to place an order to lease vehicles.
So when we, when we had this conversation last time, I don't know if you remember this, Mike, but you told me, uh, it's just an agreement.
I already don't remember it.
Yeah, it's fine. Uh, you're, it's just an agreement. We haven't decided to lease anything yet. So now that's happening.
Yes.
So I'm gonna take the opportunity to say I disagree with the idea and I think we should put it on discussion.
Okay.
Tomorrow.
Uh, number 20 will go on discussion.
The, um, I, I asked Josh Lee and Jason Barnes to be here tonight. Josh, you're, you're, Josh, would you like to hear what they have to say this evening so they don't have to come back tomorrow night?
I think that's a great idea. That's cool with you, Nick.
That's the question. Should I hold the microphone or just let it go ahead? Okay, all right. Uh, Jason Barnes, Fleet Manager, um, as far as leasing is concerned, it's an excellent opportunity. Uh, because we have an opportunity right now to replace vehicles and, um, in the, we have an opportunity to replace a, a lot, a large sum of vehicles more than we've ever done before, uh, in the years past, and I've only been here two years. Uh, we've done a couple of vehicles here and a couple of vehicles here, and each vehicle, uh, I can tell you off the top of my head, um, two police vehicles when I first got here, over a hundred and something thousand dollars. That's about the time you buy the vehicle and outfit cost for that vehicle. Uh, for a fraction of that or half of that, we can get all 14 vehicles or whatever vehicles that we need in the first run. And when I say the first run, just like you said, the chips are not available. This is true. Seeing or going to any auto dealership, these cars are selling like crazy because they're there on the lot. New cars, no way. Ford has them parked, trucks parked because they can't get the chips for it. So what we're asking for basically is to be able to just put this order in because if we don't, we won't get it until the end of next year. And our fleet, even though the borough of Westchester is small, um, a couple of things you have to take into consideration. One, uh, is the age of the fleet. And, um, and I'm, I'm gonna hurt some people when I say the next statement. Our engine hours, um, and engine hours, if you look at, uh, manufacturer specs for every engine hour, that's considered 33 miles. So if a police officer, and I'm not, trust me, I'm not picking on the police by no way, but if a police officer's car is idling, um, they're sitting somewhere and they're just idling, that's one hour is 33 miles. Where we may not show in mileage, we all, we do show in engine hours, which, uh, increases maintenance costs. So that's what, that's what we're trying to do right here because if we don't do it, um, then we will, I can guarantee you that the maintenance costs will go up. That's not a question. It will go up. So again, we're just trying to, I guess, put a dent in this and alleviate this and get away from this and able to change this. And it's a, it's a great opportunity to replace, um, some of our fleet with hybrid vehicles to the future. So that's why I say it's a great opportunity to do, uh, Enterprise right now. Uh, because if we don't, then we're going to come back every year and say, can we get two vehicles over here? Can we get three vehicles over here? And we're just going to go back and forth with that if anybody has any questions for me.
Uh, thank you.
Hey, Jason.
Yes.
That's a question for you. With regards to the, the police patrol cars in particular,
Mm-hmm.
Are you prepared to do the kind of regular maintenance? I know it's under warranty for the heavy stuff, but are you, are you prepared to do the, the regular maintenance?
Regular maintenance, yes. As far as Enterprise is concerned, in our shop here, our shop would be considered a designated, I talked to Seth several times. Our shop would be considered a designated shop that we can do regularly scheduled maintenance. Now, when I say better scheduled maintenance, we're just talking oil changes, wiper blades, maybe change some tires. And trust me, if you're the police, we're going to be changing some tires. But that's what we're, that's just what we're doing. A, a newer vehicle, of course, everybody knows newer vehicle doesn't require as much maintenance as an older vehicle does. So we're just going to do regular scheduled maintenance. So again, oil changes, tires, tire rotation, maybe some brakes, everything down there. And, but the beauty of it is we won't, uh, incur that much maintenance because the Westchester is a small borough and they're not doing that many miles and not going that way, that, you know, that distance. So it's not a, a beat up. They're not beating the cars up, in other words. But the age of the fleet right now is a consideration that we should, you know, look into Enterprise and, and order the cars now.
Thanks. Mr. Scott?
Mike Perone. Good evening. Uh, thank you for your call explaining it to me. Uh, I was all had questions last week, but I, I see what's going on and I, I again, um, extend my great thanks to everybody who worked on this because it seems like a complicated deal. In fact, it's so complicated, you need an attorney to read all this stuff. Did you, did you, did you run it by our guys? That, that's a serious question. Okay. This is Enterprise, which has an outlet here in town, and so I'm glad we're using them, but uh, are they the only outfit that does this sort of thing?
We first started the, the
Thank you, and, um, that leads me to my other question. Sourcewell, I couldn't figure out what that was among the papers. What, what, how does Sourcewell fit in?
Co-Stars?
It, it's a buying agency.
Yeah, um, I can, I can help you out.
It's just like Co-Stars.
Well, Co-Stars, Sourcewell, um, basically Pennsylvania, the state of Pennsylvania came up with a, a program. Vendors and products are given at a discounted rate for Pennsylvania people, Pennsylvania residents or Pennsylvania companies. So what, what, what we're doing is say, um, if you're buying a new vehicle, uh, the regular, uh, off-the-street customer would get one price, but then we would be about $10,000 cheaper because we are part of this Co-Stars program. So it basically just gives us the best price. That's, that's basically what it is. It's just, um, uh, that, like I said, the state of Pennsylvania puts us together just to give us the best price. No, no, we purchase the vehicle under the program. Um, Sourcewell program or under the Co-Stars program, uh, because we are a Co-Stars member, we get a discounted price. It's just like any, uh, being, uh, discounted, if you're a, a great person at Macy's or something like that, you would get a discount because you've shopped at Macy's for a while. Basically, it's the same thing. Because we are part of this program, we're going to get the discount on anything that we purchase or any work that is done in the borough or anything like that. Yes.
So it's advisory, essentially.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there any other question?
I have one question.
Sure.
Are we able to use that program without Enterprise? Like, is that what we normally do?
As far as Co-Stars, we do it now. We, we do it without Enterprise, absolutely. Every, pretty much everything that I do, um, or buy or need parts that I buy or anything like that as a Co-Stars, has to be a Co-Stars vendor.
So that's not changing.
That's not changing.
Already like that.
Yeah, we're, we're in it. We're in it to win it. We're not changing that.
We use, we use Co-Stars to buy, you know, lots of different things.
Yes, right.
We can buy printers, we can buy computers, electronics, you, you name it, we can buy.
Along with Mr. Scott's question, and, uh, Mr. Flynn, I think you said Enterprise is sanctioned by the state. Are they the only rental or leasing group sanctioned by the state of Pennsylvania?
And then in terms of our regular maintenance, where is that done now?
Uh, regular maintenance is done two places. Sometimes we do it at the shop and a lot of time it's outsourced by taking it back to the dealer or someone like that. Yeah, but we, uh, in two places, either at the shop or it's outsourced to the dealer.
So regular, like, oil changes, like you were saying, wiper blades, ties occasionally?
Right here in Westchester. We do that right here in Westchester. Yes, that's just a minor, uh, P O maintenance, yes.
Okay, so I mean, I, I guess I'm a little bit confused about the argument for Enterprise. The point being that, you know, the maintenance or repair is covered or whatever, we're already doing that in-house. The idea that we get to use the Co-Stars program, we're already using the Co-Stars program. And I, I guess the concern I have is I think the vast majority of the data that I've been given concerning this decision has come directly from Enterprise. Um, though, like, one of the things I did get, um, internally was a spreadsheet of maintenance costs, if you remember that, really big. But, um, it was very big. Um, and there were a lot of big numbers on there for sure, but, um, if I'm remembering correctly, Enterprise isn't going to cover, like, anything that, like denting or collisions or anything like that.
No, uh, if, if there is an accident, we are, we are responsible for the accident.
And then there was stuff concerning like fire trucks and then like upfitting for police cars, which we're seeing right now. We're
Yeah.
Exactly, and that's what was on my spreadsheet though, which is to the point that I'm making. Exactly, and that's what was on my spreadsheet though, which is to the point that I'm making here. I can bring it tomorrow, still have it.
Well, I think the thing to keep in mind though, that I think you said at the beginning, which was, you know, we would normally budget to buy two cars, right? For a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, let's say. We're going to get fourteen cars theoretically for sixty-eight thousand dollars.
I mean, that's it's like saying, oh, we're going to get a car for forty-five hundred dollars. Like, it's not the full picture. That's what we're paying yearly. So what I want to see is what would it look like yearly? Like, what would a five-year plan look like for us to do our own purchasing? And I know like.
Well, we could do that right here, right? Five times one-twenty is what, six hundred thousand dollars for ten cars? Five times sixty-eight thousand for fourteen times five, right?
I didn't follow that. But. But.
I'm saying at the end of five years under the leasing program, you will have spent seventy percent of the amount of money and you will end up with seventy cars in theory. So seventy percent the cost, seven times the number of vehicles. All of which will be new vehicles, hopefully green vehicles, newer vehicles, lesser maintenance. That that's the that's the long-term goal here is to have reduced annual cost. Obviously, we're not owning the cars. I mean, that's the same calculus that anyone goes through when they decide whether to lease or buy a car. But, you know, it's not like we're buying nineteen sixty-seven Cobras and putting them downstairs to grow in value. But I think that's the calculus, right? It's we could spend more money and get fewer cars and own them, or we could spend less money, get more cars and lease them.
Mr. Galley, the the and Mr. Barnes and Mr. Allen, the 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 maintenance end of the cars, because they are still under warranty from the manufacturer. Remember that under they're under for bumper to bumper to hit so many miles. Am I right, Mr. Barnes?
That is correct.
They they're under the warranty for the manufacturer. So if something goes sideways with the car, the manufacturer, whatever manufacturer picks up the picks up the warranty. Just as if we would buy one, but we're getting fourteen cars with bumper to bumper warranty. And anything major goes with it, go back to the go back to the dealer. And Mr. Barnes and his team just keeps the general maintenance running.
That's right.
So.
Well, I think the other thing that's nice about that is that, to your point, the borough is only so big and usually your warranties are mileage related, right? So driving thirty-six thousand miles or forty-five, whatever it is in Westchester is a feat. That's a lot of job in Westchester.
The. It might. It might be good to hear because, you know, besides public works, probably the police have the biggest, you know, biggest, biggest piece of this puzzle. And I think Josh might be able to just give you his perspective from the police department.
Not pressing the button. So as far as the police concerned, hi, everybody, sorry, Josh Lee, Westchester Police. I'm the operations lieutenant. Chief Moorhead apologizes, he's in training again. Sure, I said that. Just too. So my wife writes the checks at home. I'm not the finance guy, although it does make sense to me here rationale for why this financially makes sense. But obviously, that's a decision for, you know, for really smarter people than me. But yeah, I'm told there's more than half a million dollars in savings over the next ten years with this. And again, that's that's your decision, it's not my decision. But what excites me as far as the the police goes is the long-term look and the the planning in knowing that if we enter into this this plan and this cycle, that we are cycling out of cars that are aged and getting cars that are safer. Just one example, an example that really does excite me, believe me, is a backup camera. Some of the police cars, in fact, more than half the police cars don't have backup cameras. Anybody that has a car that's like four years old or or less has a backup camera in it. I'm lucky enough to have one in the truck I bought three or four years ago and you get used to that. But that's just a minimum safety standard. So when we're in old cars, because we're doing the right thing and hanging on to old cars and getting all the mileage and all the dollars out and we can, when we're in that that thought pattern in these old cars, we are giving up some safety on the other end. Let alone, you know, front crash avoidance, rear crash avoidance, lane change, all that, you know, all that crazy stuff. So when it comes to police cars and operating safely, you know, I'd love for Borough Council to go out in twenty twenty-two and just buy a dozen brand-new police cars. Not going to ask you to do that. But this plan does make sense to me for the police, really in general, for the entire borough to do that. Having, you know, having said that, if the plan is, and I have to be the have to be the spokesperson here for for police, if the plan is not to go forward with with leasing, we still need, we still really absolutely need and we're still going to ask, we absolutely need a minimum of of two patrol cars next year. You know, passed on the the cars two years in a row now. Right decision to make financially speaking, but we're behind the eight ball. And if we continue on that plan of of two a year, it's a big expense, hundreds some thousand dollars for for two patrol cars. But if we continue on that plan, we're going to really be behind the eight ball in in two years and three years and four years when we're driving around in cars that are twelve and fourteen years old instead of eight and ten years old. So I probably just confused the situation for you and I I apologize if I did, but it's kind of where we.
I think that was very helpful. We hadn't talked about the safety aspect of the newer cars and I have absolutely gotten used to all of the backup cameras and the beeping and you don't even have to look when you pull into the parking space because my car.
You do, you should still look, you should still look.
Sure, sure, yeah, I will. But no, I appreciate that. Do we have any questions for the lieutenant?
I could add a little bit. The the cost for two new patrol cars versus six, well, six cars total for the police department is a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. So that's what we're looking for and ask if we don't see for next year two patrol SUVs are fifteen thousand. Now, our understanding is that instead proceed with the leasing route. We we have a total fleet of twenty-four vehicles.
Just for the police?
Just for the police. Four administrative, fourteen patrol and six detective. So our understanding is we'll be able to get six vehicles per year, get rid of our aging fleet in four years from twenty twenty-two. All of our vehicles will be four years old or less. Along with that comes safety upgrades. Along with that comes, and we looked at it, Josh went and spoke with Lieutenant Liam, sorry, went and spoke with the enterprise representative and our ask would be we can go full hybrid. The hybrid patrol vehicles are actually less expensive than. Was it Josh like?
It's almost a thousand dollars, you know, sticker price difference. And I just learned last week that the hybrid these cars and we're in twenty twenty-one, the hybrids are the standard. And the regular gas engine is the upgrade. Hybrid's actually the base model.
So a lot of our considerations have been alleviated, like the ability for our own public works, for our fleet manager to do some of the the regular maintenance. There is the upfitting cost of fifteen thousand dollars. So I'm not sure where that cost benefit is going to fall as to when to, you know, dispose of of the set of vehicles. But between the safety improvements, between being able to be, or the department have all hybrid vehicles within five years of right now, additional safety and everything else seems to be and and the the cost benefit with regards to the maintenance, when the maintenance expires in these vehicles from years six through ten or whatever it is, is very, very expensive.
You know, it's nice about the hybrid vehicles too is that when you're stopped somewhere and letting it idle, it's not actually idling unless you get the A C cranking. You know, the engine will turn off, so you're not getting those engine miles, you're not, you know, wasting gas, doing all that other stuff. Sorry.
Yeah, no, not at all. So if, I mean, if our understanding is we're getting six vehicles per year for the next four years, just want to affirm that.
I don't know.
I want to bound future council's decision tonight in regards to six vehicles.
Yeah. The the answer to your question though, Jordan, all seriously. If council approves this going forward for this year, next year and so forth, and if it doesn't work out, we can get out of it. So that's the beauty of this thing, you know, signing a contract for, you know, each year and if we want to sell the vehicles, we can sell them and get back. Used to do. So there's no harm, no foul. I don't think that's going to happen. I think people have brought up points collectively that show the advantages over leasing as opposed to purchasing. Josh has only talked about two police vehicles a year. There's another. Vehicles we have. Haven't even talked about it. Other departments need two a year for the police department at over a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
So going back to that five-year plan discussion with a fleet of what, sixty-four vehicles? You know, in five years, we'll have the oldest vehicle will be five years old.
How much are we going to be paying yearly when the entire fleet is leased?
I would assume if we're paying sixty-eight grand this year, you're looking at a similar cost in ongoing, right?
Yeah, 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 yeah. And that's that's part of the reason why from a budgeting perspective, it's more advantageous for us as an administration to have a a smooth plane to look at each year. So we, you know, seventy to eighty thousand dollars a year per vehicles. Because every every year you lease vehicles, we're going to be turning back in vehicles value also. Real value won't kick in, I don't believe, until four or five years from now if you stay in this program because then we'll be we'll be turning back vehicles that are only four or five years old, they'll have more value. We get that money back. Turn lease and that gets applied to your new lease.
Whereas nowadays, that truck or SUV or whatever sticks around for ten or twelve years. We put it on muni bid and get eight hundred bucks for it or twelve hundred bucks.
Exactly. And I, you know, Barb is sitting back here awful quiet. I know she has numbers in her head. She reported at the finance committee meeting last week of, you know, over budgeted on maintenance costs already this year. It's an example I have. To Mr. Perone's point, I believe Barb, shake your head if you can, I believe that we only have eight thousand dollars left to spend for half a year. Am I close, Barb?
Come on up, Barb, I'll sit down.
Yeah, because of all the maintenance of the of the existing vehicles that we have. Barb, tell us how much what are our, I don't remember, and how much we have left.
Twenty twenty-one budget for equipment repair, five thousand dollars. Your date we're spent, we're at seventy-five thousand, so that leaves out eight thousand dollars per. Just for vehicle repair, so I think one of the good benefits with this plan is the cost savings benefit each year, how much we're going to need to buy new vehicles. And I would expect to see that fine item come. That's a, you know, something to keep as well.
What was the repair line item for this year, Barb?
One twenty-five and we're at seventy-five through June. So it's almost fifty percent overspent. Six more months to go, so.
Answer your question, Nick, if all the vehicles are approximately the same, it's about three hundred thousand dollars a year five years from now out of the dealership business. And our our understanding for the police department is that the police department will have control as to, you know, because of the upfitting costs and, you know, keeping cars on the street, all that, will have control as to when and if turn a car, correct, contractually?
But no, no, Bernard.
They can't make us.
They can't make us do it. So the answer to the question is yes, we're in total control. Yeah, our name's on the lease, you know, our name's on the on the title.
Our concern is it's just with the patrol vehicles because of the upfitting sort of thing.
Anybody want to buy a twenty thirteen Toyota Prius wagon now that used cars are in high demand? I know a guy. Nick, do you have any other questions? Do you want to keep this on discussion? Okay. We will keep twenty on discussion for tomorrow. The next item on the agenda is to authorize the borough manager to file a federal grant application on behalf of the rail advisory committee at no cost to the borough. This is a request through a federal government program called the RACE program, which is a Department of Transportation program. The restoration committee put together a proposal that takes into account a potential return to service on a more limited capacity or on a smaller scale, I should say, and are seeking money through the federal government RACE program to get that funded. As the agenda item says, this is no cost to the borough. This is a relatively time-sensitive issue, so I think it probably makes sense for us to vote on this one tonight. But I'll open it up to Borough Council for further discussion.
And this is this is not a matching grant or anything like that, this is no cost to the borough.
Correct.
There is a local match component, but that match is in the form of in-kind contributions from the Westchester Railroad folks as to labor and materials.
So just to further explain that, in the proposal itself, it outlines an eight hundred thousand dollar in-kind contribution, but that has nothing to do with the borough. The borough's not saying we're going to do anything kind or out of pocket or anything else like that. That's specifically related to the railroad.
The app, the app, the application itself says the number of hours that the railroad volunteers have put in with that value is that's all part of the grant application. So that's the twenty percent match.
So it's not like they'll say yes and then ask the borough for that. That the yes would be contingent on the acceptance of the in-kind contribution.
From the railroad committee, railroad restoration committee?
I don't think it's technically from the committee, it's from another group of volunteers that maintains the railroad track. But.
That's correct.
Yeah.
The the application is to get funding in order to get the all of the track from class one to class three that can go sixty miles per hour. What it contemplates is. What it contemplates is a shuttle, a train shuttle service from Westchester to the Middletown Wawa Station. It's supposed to be completed by next summer from Westchester, four stations, from Westchester to Wawa, Middletown, with the upgraded, restored track to Class Three, sixty mile per hour in about twelve minutes.
What if most residents take the shuttle or want a shuttle from Westchester to Exton? That's a lot closer.
Mr. Galley, Bernie Flynn. The, initially, when we talked about the, the economic impact study, I voted against that program based on not having the money in a line item or funding. It was a, a borough council grant to the, to the committee to move forward to do the economic study. There was a four-three vote, four said yes, three said no. Under this program here, there is no matching funds from the borough and, and no anticipated funding from the residents of the borough. This is a strong ask, you know, from the feds to, to do it. The Historic Railroad Commission, as you explained, has offered their labor as the twenty percent match. So if, you know, they are agreeing to do all the work, the fix, whatever has to be fixed or whatever they can do. You know, this is a merit-based, am I correct, a merit-based grant? So many people are asking for this grant, and if it's, if it's free money, why don't we just ask for it?
That's sort of my thought is if they say no, they say no, and if they say yes, great. And to your question, Lisa, I don't, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that. I mean, as somebody who used to take the bus into Philly from Roxborough, you know, you're beholden to traffic on seventy-six on that route. And, uh, you know, there was always the decision, do I want to walk down the hill to get on the train? Or do I want to take the bus and, and risk it, risk it with traffic? I think the same would be true here, right? Do you want to grab a bus and maybe get stuck in that, you know, merge line on Pottstown Pike? Or do you want to just hop on a rail line that obviously can't have traffic? But that's a, that's a question for somebody other than me.
And maybe I misunderstood what Mr. Norley said. I thought it was a shuttle from here to Middletown.
It's a rail shuttle, so it would go on the track. Yeah.
You misunderstood. Okay.
I'm envisioning like that one hundred line that goes like through Wayne from Norristown, et cetera. Like a smaller, smaller.
I know, whenever I hear shuttle, I, I think of bus, but it's, it's, it's just considered a shuttle because it's, I mean, it's like a train shuttle and it just takes you down there and you get off and you get on the, the regular SEPTA service train on, on Route One. Twelve minutes isn't bad. Bad, be able to walk, not to have a vehicle on those sorts of things.
Has SEPTA been notified of this? Has SEPTA been consulted? I mean, it's a SEPTA line. SEPTA has said there are no rail service essentially. They said, so you, are you working? No, this, I haven't heard one word about that, nor is there anything about that in this letter. It's their tracks, their layout, and you're saying we're gonna run a shuttle. Well, that's great. Just even from the standpoint of rail, SEPTA right now is replacing most of the rail with a hundred and fifteen pound rail as opposed to the hundred pound rail, which is what we have going from Gwen Mills to Westchester. So it, it, it almost doesn't matter who does the work. I mean, you're gonna have to build it to SEPTA standards. You just don't fix it up just enough so we can put a shuttle on there. And I, I guess I wouldn't be so strident about it if, if SEPTA hadn't been very clear about their lack of intentions for reopening the line. So what does SEPTA have to say about this?
My comment at the beginning of the meeting was if you gave us the money, we'd do it. Now, we don't have six hundred million dollars, but this is an alternate proposal. And I suggest, I suspect that if this solved the problem and they could make money off of it without any cost to SEPTA, then I suspect they'd be happy to, to take our twelve dollars or whatever. And, uh, and the federal government's two and a half million.
There is, SEPTA's been informed everywhere along the way. We're in process of setting up a meeting with the, the CEO and General Manager of SEPTA, Leslie Richards. And they, they also reiterated here recently that SEPTA's continued support for the Westchester Extension as a long-range project. Yeah, they're being informed entirely along the way. Yes, they, they, you know, a lot to occur. So we're continuing to, to, to make steps towards the betterment of Westchester.
When they said that they were thinking about it, they were talking twenty years from now, number one. Number two, you still haven't answered my question about whether SEPTA knows about this.
Yes, SEPTA knows about this.
Who, who have you talked to?
I'm not gonna be interrogated right now, actually.
I think that's a legitimate question to ask. Interrogating you, that's a legitimate question to ask. If SEPTA's been notified, what, what, did you talk to a bus? Talked to.
I, uh, let, let me, uh, let, excuse me, Don, I, the, the reason I put this on the agenda, council voted for this via email, actually, to Mr. Galley. But this was to ratify that vote tonight. So application's been signed and sent in already. I should argue about the.
What do we need to do to ratify that? You just want to show of hands that said yes? Let's do it now. Go for it.
Yeah, I'll second it.
I don't even have to come to these.
Ms. Dorsey, Mr. Flynn, Mr. Stefano.
Yes.
Mr. Allen, Mr. Scott, Mr. Braceley.
No.
Mr. Galley.
The next item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from last month. Any objection to this going on the consent agenda? Any other business from council or anyone else? Mr. Peron?
Yes, I have one item, minor item. It's an ask of eight hundred dollars. I got a letter from the Alan Burke, Chairman of the Westchester Downtown Foundation. They traditionally have a, um, an award ceremony at the Cheshire County Historical Society. They didn't have it last year because of the, the conditions of everyone. So they're having one this year, you know, Thursday, October twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one. And I'm asking council if you would like to be a Serpentine sponsor, which is the highest sponsor you can be for eight hundred hours, and that comes with eight free tickets to the, to the event.
That's, that's a great, and they have great food.
Uh, yes, we do. And just a reminder, tomorrow night, our pension folks from Machanoff will be here to talk about some changing of our assumptions on, on interest rates, years, debt, death rates and all that kind of good stuff. And a representative from Malley, Dale, will be here delivering the twenty-twenty audit report.
There'll, there'll also be a presentation celebrating the twenty-five-year agreement between the Westchester Railroad Heritage Association from July nineteen ninety-six to July twenty-twenty-one. There'll be a presentation for that as well.